Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the August 14th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. And as you can see, tonight is a very solemn night for this board and for this county. And we're going to do our very best to honor our Chairman, Stoney Rushing, and his family here tonight. And at this time, I would like to recognize Reverend Asco Gardine for our invocation, which will be followed by a moment of silence.
Good evening, and all. I rise with the greatest of humility and honor first and foremost to my Lord and Savior, who is Jesus the Christ. Honor those of you who are seated as our commissioners and those who serve this county so well. I honor Anne Marie and the Russian family and all persons who gathered in this chamber on this night. This place looks different this evening. I've been privileged to come in here on a number of occasions, but obviously, it looks different because it is different. What we see is a reminder that life is always fleeting, and we do well to cherish every second, every minute, every hour, and every day. We do well to cherish one another because the Scriptures does say we can be here today and gone tomorrow. And what we are witnessing tonight is proof that the God we serve does not lie. His word always comes to pass. It always is true. And again, that's why we must cherish time, cherish family, cherish one another. Before I pray, I want to lift up this passage of Scripture that I believe is most appropriate for our gathering and before we have the prayer. It's 1 Thessalonians 4:13-18. It reads rather, "Brothers and sisters, we do not want you to be uninformed about those who sleep in death, so that you do not grieve like the rest of mankind who have no hope." But we believe that Jesus died and rose again, and we believe that God will bring with Jesus those who have fallen asleep in Him. According to the Lord's Word, we tell you that we who are still alive, we who are left until the coming of the Lord, will certainly not precede those who have fallen asleep. For the Lord Himself will come down from heaven with a loud command, with the voice of the archangel, and with the trumpet call of God, and the dead in Christ will rise first. After that, we who are still alive and are left will be caught up together with them, not just with Christ Himself, but with them, those who are sleeping in Him, will be caught up together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air. And so, we will be with the Lord forever. Therefore, encourage one another with these words. I wish to encourage our Board of County Commissioners. I wish to encourage you, Ms. Anne Marie and the Russian family, and those whose hearts are heavy because of the passing of Stoney Rushing. But please be reminded that earth has no sorrow, that heaven cannot heal. Let us pray. Father, for the glory of this day and even the beauty of your righteousness, we give you thanks. You said in your word that in all things, we must give you thanks because you are too wise of a God to make mistakes concerning anything and anyone. And so, we say thank you, even though our hearts are heavy. We say thank you because we trust in you and we lean not to our own understanding. You have promised us in your word, if and when we do so, you will direct our path. So I ask even now, you would direct the paths of this, our local government officials, direct the path of Anne Marie and the Russian family, direct the paths of those who are here tonight and those whose hearts are heavy, so that we might be reminded that you are as near to us as our very breath. And if we ever doubt that, all we need to do is breathe and know that every breath we take and every move we make is because of your love, your kindness, and your tender mercy shown towards the children of men. So bless, Lord, as only you can, and give strength to our government leaders and officials to continue the work that you've laid to their hands, to their charge, that they might lead this county in a way that honors and pleases you, and that all of us will do our part to make Union County a better place to live in and a place where the love of God is spread abroad and a place where we can truly, I pray, be facsimiles of citizens in the Kingdom of Heaven. Only you can make that happen if we will simply, fully obey you and your commands and yield to your way. So I thank you for prayer. I thank you for this moment of prayer, for you declaring in your word, "The prayers of the righteous availeth much." In other words, when we pray, we get your attention and we move you on your throne. Please, God, move and move on our behalf. For this we ask, in the name of our Christ, our Lord and our Savior and our Redeemer, Yeshua, Son of the Living God. Amen and amen.
Thank you. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we are moving to Commissioners' comments. If there are any Commissioners that would like to say something, I'll start at this end.
Anne Marie, I pray that God will give you the peace and understanding and the strength to get through this difficult time and be with you and your children.
To Anne Marie and to Stoney's children, let me just sincerely offer my deepest condolences. I was someone who on occasion wrestled with Stoney in the arena, but I know that he was a great father, and I heard from friend and enemy and apathetic all across the spectrum about what a good father he was. And I just, again, sincerely offer my condolences to you and your family.
You know, today is a really hard day, and we certainly mourn the loss of Commissioner Rushing, but we're also going to celebrate his life, his accomplishments, and also his service to our county and its citizens. Today's a hard day for me. It's a hard day for many. You know, before every Board of Commissioners' meeting, I would always try to get here early. And no matter how early I got here, though, I was always second. And I was always second because Stoney was always there first. Stoney would always be here, just like he was always here for Union County. And as I walked in today, I felt a loss, a loss that I know that I share with many of you. Although many people know, Stoney is Commissioner Rushing and for the work that he did on this board and for our county, as well as being the Chairman of this board, I always knew him as Stoney. And Stoney was always a true champion of the people of Union County. But I believe that he was more than that to me. He was more than that to Union County. He was more than that to his family, to his wife, and to his children. Stoney was like a brother to me. He was a mentor, but more importantly, he was my good friend. I'll always be thankful for the time that I knew him, and I'll always wish that I had more. Through the years, a lot of people would say that Stoney's been polarizing, and you know what? That might very well be true. But Stoney would always take the time to talk to people, and he would always take the time to listen to people. And Stoney was always concerned with what it meant to be fair and honest when it came to making decisions. And I would say that few have worked harder for the benefit of all of the citizens of Union County. Today is difficult, and words can't even express the heartbreaking loss that I feel and that I share with Anne Marie, with Reagan, with Riley, and your entire family. But I want to assure you all, and I want to assure Union County, that the work that has begun is not going to stop. There's not one single person that can replace Stoney Rushing, not one. But Stoney had such a positive impact on so many people that I feel as though we all carry a piece of him in our hearts. And as long as you have those that are willing to fight for the values of Union County and the values that we hold dear, and those that are willing to love this county like the way Stoney did, Stoney will always live on. We're going to finish what we started. I pray, Anne Marie, that God blesses you, Reagan, and Riley, your entire family, with His grace and the peace that only He can give, and also pray for encouragement and hope for our county that Stoney reflected every day.
Thank you. I had the privilege and the honor of being introduced to Stoney Rushing back in 2013, 2014. I believe the county was in the middle of a $91 million lawsuit with the Board of Education, and someone had the crazy idea that I should run for the school board. And so, shortly thereafter, I met my best friend and my mentor, and I thought, what in the world have I gotten myself into? But ever since that time, there's one thing that has never, ever wavered with Stoney Rushing, and that was his commitment to his friends and teaching us everything that I needed to know, that anyone that was willing to partner with him, there is not an amount of time that he would not spend with a friend, an ally. I don't personally like the word enemy because I will tell you that my friend, he didn't think he had any enemies. He thought everybody loved him and that we could all work this out. This was solvable. And I think that's the thing that I will carry with me the most, is it's okay to have disagreements. Stoney and I had plenty. And some people have thought that he had puppets and could pull their strings, but I will tell you that there were many disagreements, and we all loved each other, and we were able to walk away and come back the next day and get back to finding solutions. He couldn't hurt his feelings. Anne Marie, you're going to have to explain that to me one day. You couldn't hurt his feelings because all he cared about was doing good, honoring his Lord and Savior, loving his wife, loving his children. And we heard a lot about water and sewer today. But I want you to know that that was very low on his totem pole. He had his big rocks in the right place, and he put first things first, and that was his faith, forgiveness of sin, his baptismal, and then doing the Lord's work that for him began with his wife. He loved you, Anne Marie. And he loved to tell me about the first time y'all went and had Chinese. And then the day that he knew that he was going to propose to you, and he went to the Chinese restaurant that you loved and left your ring with the waitress. I mean, who does that? And you kept asking for lemon or something to be brought to the table, and she finally brought the egg rolls or the... What are those cookies called? Fortune cookies. And you accepted his proposal and became his bride. He loved telling me that story, and I loved hearing it, so I heard it a lot. Many other stories and how much he loved, loves his son and daughter. And boy, we were so impressed with those young adults today. We will always carry Stoney with us, every single one of us. And this exceeds my wildest dreams, to go from school board to county commissioner and to speak on my friend's behalf tonight and look straight across to Ms. Lynn, because he sure loved Ms. Lynn. That was the first thing he told me after the primary. He said, "You're going to love Ms. Lynn." So I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight, and thank you for the kind words for a really, really good man who put first things first. And I think that's a lesson for all of us, put first things first, and all this other stuff will fall into place as it should. So thank you for being here tonight. That brings us to informal comments. And first up is Ms. Deb Helms.
Good evening. It's hard to see that empty chair, and it's hard to follow all of the nice words that were said. A little over two years ago, I stood here at this podium, and I stood here multiple times complaining about issues that I saw as a citizen in this county that I wasn't happy about, and that was when I got to know Stoney Rushing. I miss my phone ringing and seeing him calling. My children got to know him. My entire family got to know him, and we appreciate so much. Union County laid to rest today, I would probably say, one of the people who was the absolute most passionate and loved this county more than anybody else. What I witnessed in the past couple of weeks, yes, it has been said, he's polarizing. Plenty of people have had plenty of disagreements with him. What I have witnessed in the past couple of weeks at the hospital and through hospice, and people from multiple faiths have came and sprinkled their blessings on him, came together to pray for him and for comfort for the family. And at the service earlier today, there were even former candidates for county commission from the other political party who were there to pay their respects to him. No matter how you agreed with him or disagreed with him, he would still have a conversation with you, and people still would talk to him, and he was a very good source of information, and he could always take, even water and sewer, but he could always take those difficult conversations and break it down into layman's terms where, you know, he could just dumb it down to where anybody could understand. I mean, he taught my two children more about water and sewer, and they're six and eight years old, but he could explain it even to a level that they could understand sometimes. So the entire county is going to miss him. My family is going to miss him, and it's going to be really hard to move on, but I pray that God gives this entire county and especially his family the strength to carry through. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Lee.
Thank you, and good evening, Board. Signed up today to talk about an interlocal agreement, and I'm going to talk about an interlocal agreement, but it has nothing to do with senior agenda packet. I had the pleasure of starting an interlocal agreement with Stoney Rushing many, many years ago, when he was my instructor to get my concealed carry permit. And during that time, we had a pretty good time of going through that process, and we always stayed in contact. always stayed in contact. And then he became county commissioner and lo and behold, I'm resident of Marvin and on the Marvin Councilmember. And we've had many discussions. More so than not, he understood and knew I lost my wife four years ago and what I went through. So the interlocal agreement that we had was that when he ever called me, I answered. And the end of July, I picked up the phone and I called him and he answered, as he always did. And he said, "All right, what are we going to talk about?" I said, "Well, I'm going to talk about the interlocal agreement we have." And he goes, "Well, let's do it." And I said, "No, Stony, this is going to be about something different and it's going to be about what you're going through. You need to take care of you and your family. That's the most important thing." Things that we view every day as what we think is significant, it's days like today, they turn insignificant. I appreciated and always respected the time and everything that we discussed, everything that this board discussed, and I know today is a heavy-hearted day. And my deepest condolences go to certainly this board and certainly to his family. So with that being said, I hope that you support our interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Worgen.
My name is Steve Worgen. I am a resident of Union County. I live in Heritage South, community of Indian Trail. My intention was to discuss the sewer smells we have. I now feel that's inappropriate. So I would prefer to offer my condolences and I lost my mom and dad at a very early age and I thought I would give you our experience in the moment I have because I want to completely shift what I'm talking... Everybody who's at that panel knows what I'm talking about. I'm a 32-year resident of North Carolina, but only three and a half-year resident of Union County. And I am the last political person out there. I don't, frankly, no disrespect, I'm a healthy amount of cynicism when it comes to politicians, but I have a serious issue in our community. And we were here two months ago and we spoke. And I made the first of three phone calls to Stony and surprisingly, he answered my phone. And I was like, "I'm flattered that you would take my phone call." He engaged me in our process and he said, "I'm here for you. I will take this." He then showed up at our town hall meeting and he was engaged in, from a cynic standpoint, I can't tell you how much that meant. And then we had a phone call with him a week prior to his passing. And he gave us his, you know, "This is what's going to happen. You're going to be on the agenda. We're going to do this." And at the end of about a 20-minute conversation, he said, "I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing you right now because of my medication." And that's the first time I was aware of Stony having... I said, "You all right?" And he told me why I'm going through this. And I said, "Stony, why are you on this phone call to me? Go take care of yourself. We've got this." And then when I found out he passed, I pulled our committee together and I said, "He's a rare man. I don't know him. I don't know him like you all do, but I know he's going to be missed. I'm sorry for your loss. I'll address our issues at another meeting." Thank you.
That brings us to a public hearing. Public hearing. Abigail? Oh, she's not here. Bear with me. They've given me a few things to juggle. I will now recognize our county attorney, Jason Kay, for a brief explanation of the structure of tonight's meeting.
Folks, in a few comments here, I wanted to explain how this evening's meeting is going to be a little bit different than what some of you may have experienced. I see a lot of familiar faces out there and you are no doubt familiar with the rhythms of a county commission meeting and those are going to be a little bit disrupted and abbreviated tonight. The first thing you'll notice is that our meeting is going to be quite a bit briefer. In just a moment, we will have a public hearing, which has been previously scheduled on one matter on the agenda to be announced. Then after that, we'll take one vote on the consent portion of the agenda and then the board will retire into closed session in the back. After that meeting, after that closed session portion, they'll come out just to simply recess. We're going to pause the meeting through that recess until August the 21st. At 6:00 PM, we'll resume in this chamber for the public portion of that meeting at 6:00 PM for you all to participate. But as soon as that consent vote is taken, the public portion of this meeting will functionally end and you all can plan your evenings accordingly here in just a few moments.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an ordinance concerning land use board compensation, which has previously been advertised to occur tonight. I will open the public hearing and recognize Lee Jensen, our planning director, for comments from our county staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair Merrill. As you'll remember, the land use board was established effective on July 1st of this year. That board was assigned the duties of the planning board and the board of adjustment. Both those previous boards were compensated based on an amount per member and travel reimbursement to the meeting. Our recommendation is to compensate the land use board $50 per meeting and reimburse their travel, just like the old boards, and to make that effective sort of retroactively to July 1st. That board has already met once to have a training session and they'll also meet tomorrow night in their first regular meeting. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on the public hearing for this matter? Given that most speakers have signed up for the public hearing, we will conclude the public hearing. I would now like to close the public hearing. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any revisions or requests to what you have received on consent?
Motion to approve the consent as presented.
Thank you. We are now at the close of our consent agenda. And as the county attorney noted, in light of the circumstances, I would like to accept your motion on the consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 4O. We will not be conducting the remainder of this agenda and the public business items seen on this agenda, rather we will now move back into closed session. At the end of closed session tonight, we plan to recess our regular meeting until Monday, August 21st at 5:15 PM in the boardroom of the commissioner's conference room. That will be for our closed session. And as usual, the public portion of this meeting on August 21st will begin at 6:00 PM in this chamber if you wish to attend or tune in online. And I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight for this special meeting to recognize our chairman, Commissioner Rushing, and his many, many years of service to Union County and to all our staff and to this board. So thank you very much and, Anne Marie, we love you and we support you and we will always be family. I now move that the board enter back into closed session for the following purposes: pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to GS 153A-98; secondly, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with the attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege; third, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee or prospective public officer, employee; and finally, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A7, to plan, conduct or hear reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal misconduct. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. We will now retire back to our conference room for our closed session. And again, everyone, please travel safe and it was wonderful to have you here with us tonight on this special evening. And thank you, Bishop Gardini, good friend.